Copy the minutes from our last meeting of September 24th.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And seconded. If there are no further questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Also, in your package, you should have received the latest copy of the check register. If everyone had indicated if you've received that register. Thank you. Okay, that gets us to, in our agenda, the portion of our meeting for public comments. And first to have signed in is Mr. Warren Price. Mr. Price, please come forward.
Yes.
Appreciate the freedom to be able to speak.
Yes, sir.
I spoke before the council about a budget and change in ordinance for hardship cases. And before election. And use my situation as evidence of a total hip surgery in July of 16 and had changed code on patios. I had my freezers filled with organic food and six days to move them. A total stranger built my patio in in five days and took $600 out of his pocket with no collateral to see that you all didn't do this to me. Total stranger. To stop the hardship and harmless and inhumane action. City took my farm truck, and I still don't have a farm truck. I had a double knee surgery in January. I don't know of any change since the election. Can you all inform me of any change that you have done since I spoke on this situation? Any at all? Totally ignored, put it out the back. Well, I assured you I'd be back, and I didn't want to let you down. I had a great friend for over 50 years. Served in the North Korean War and stood strong for humanity. I'm sorry he touches me. He has a daughter on council. A son-in-law running for county attorney. And a son running for mayor out of one family. It's unusual, real unusual. I'm proud of him. I'm proud to see a family stand so strong for humanity and make changes. I will be contacting all churches by Facebook and the Internet. And any Christian that professes to be a Christian and don't vote for a budget for hardship people is a hypocrite. A hypocrite! And I won't miss words. Look through your Bible from one end to the other than what Jesus done when he walked the earth. We're getting away from our foundations. And all about humanity and will... The veterans will support a veteran family. And the veterans is all about humanity. And we salute the flag today. Where are you going to stand? Anyway, I'm turning this over to the vote. We got a $400,000 budget for dogs and not a penny for hardship people. That's a disgrace. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Next on the sheet for public comment is Ms. Emily Metcalf with Elizabeth Village.
Thank you. My name's Emily Metcalf with Elizabeth Village, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you all. I'm here because Elizabeth Village is going to be hosting our Domestic Violence Awareness Week next week, and it's called Stop the Silence, Stop the Violence. Elizabeth Village is aware that domestic violence is a huge issue here in Scott County. And as an organization, we hope to move forward and begin serving those survivors. And one way we have done that in the past is through our Suitcase Project, which we started last year, when we pack suitcases with resources for survivors and give those to the police department, and they have those on hand. And Megan Shook let me know last week that they are running low and that those suitcases are a tangible thing that those individuals can have to know that there are options for them and that they have resources and support. So we want to continue that, and we're going to be doing that Suitcase Project this next Saturday, October 20th. But because that event was such a success, both with letting survivors know that we are here, but also the community, they loved getting to rally behind those survivors and to show their support and their solidarity. So we wanted to make that a week-long event. So on those postcards, we have all of those events listed, and we'd love to see you all there if you're able. Some of those events do require registration. I think it's the yoga class, the self-defense class, and the Suitcase Project, oh, and In Her Shoes as well. So you can find that link on our Facebook. But if you don't register, that's fine. Well, we won't turn anyone away. But there's one more thing I was going to say. Yes, they're all free and open to the public, and we want both survivors and our community to be there and to show your support. And the only event that isn't open to everyone is Tuesday, the In Her Shoes. That's going to be just for Georgetown College students. So we'd love to see you there.
Are you still taking donations of items that go in the suitcase?
Yes.
Like I helped with last year?
Yes, yeah.
Toiletry items?
There's Cub Scout that's doing a lot of those for us. So I'll know, I think, by tomorrow if we need more. So I'll be posting that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Emily. Next on the list is Mr. Stephen Price.
Mayor Prather, it's Town Council. I'm here to complain. It's not unusual for me. I think you have wasted a lot of money by digging up the north end of Royal Spring Park. I tried to advise you that there was a much cheaper, probably just as effective, non-industrial, non-motorized, non-petrol-fuel solution to the problem. But you, Mayor Prather, said we've been working on it and we're not going to turn back. And the engineer himself told me he thought that a vertical screen on the west side of the park might be effective enough to do the job. And he was thinking of a vertical screen of the biofiber that you put down horizontally. But I don't know, I couldn't keep up with it and other things to do, so I don't know what happened down there. I don't even know if they put a vertical screen. But my... The reason I'm here is to advise you that you habitually, impulsively, and I almost, I guess I should say addictively, turn to cash flow to solve every problem. And I urge you to remember that prior to industry, there were botanic solutions, horticultural solutions, forestry solutions, that people had to rely on because there was no machinery. There were no engineers to pay off, no bulldozers, no bicos to operate, to pollute the air, to make a lot of noise, and to cause climate change, which is, I don't know if you read the paper, I don't even know if you believe in climate change, but apparently it's wreaking havoc on the coastal areas of the world. And it'll eventually get here. I think your public policy should reject motorization. And I'm going to tell you, Tom, you and I both studied under George Lesby. And I'll tell you several years, a couple of things, two years ago, somebody complained to Judge Lesby that wood, driftwood, had piled up on top of the dam at Great Crossings. And he told, whoever complained said it should be moved. And the newspaper reported that. I went down there and looked at it, rode down on my bicycle. I concluded that I could get rid of that driftwood if... I didn't think it was a problem, but somebody apparently did, and the newspaper reported it had been complained, the subject of complaint. So I looked at it, I come to Judge Lesby, I say, "Judge Lesby, I can take a... I can sharpen a couple of hand saws and wait out there and saw up that driftwood and toss it over the dam and get rid of it. I'll do it for $10 an hour." Would have taken me a week at the most. $10 times 40 hours, $400. Judge Lesby said, "Come back and tell the town, tell the fiscal court that on the subsequent Friday." I think that was a Friday I talked to him. He said, "We'll be meeting the next Friday." He said, "You have to have a life jacket." So I secured, I borrowed a life jacket, brought it to the fiscal court meeting with intention to offer to the fiscal court my services for $10 an hour to get rid of the driftwood.
We recall that incident, Steve.
And Judge Lesby, I don't know, were you still on the fiscal court then?
No, but we recall...
You told us about it weeks ago.
We recall the incident, and they declined your offer.
Yeah, well, when I got to the meeting, Judge Lesby told me he'd already engaged a bunch of engineers to do it. And they came over here, and the town county paid $20,000 to have the driftwood removed.
Yes, sir.
And I'm saying, Tom, that it could have been done for probably $400 at the most. And for you, or... I don't follow Judge Lesby anymore. I think that was a big mistake. I think he's made a lot of other mistakes, and I think you owe it to the town to consider and weigh and reconsider all of the habits, the mathematic habits, consumer habits that we were acquired of studying over there under Judge Lesby. And I'll give you a good example, right? You can walk on, you go out to...
Let me interrupt you. I'm a 67-year-old man, and I take full responsibility for my actions. I don't blame Judge Lesby for anything. In fact, I'll give Judge Lesby credit for a lot of things in my life.
I'll give him credit for some things, too.
But at the council meeting tonight, there's no sense in you educating us about why Judge Lesby's influence has been negative. It just... If you would come to your point, and then we can move on with the meeting.
The point is, Tom, we are caught in a cash-flow addictive, consumer, knee-jerk, impulsive, reach-for-the-wallet commerce. When any problem arises, your public instinct is to tax, go to the tax coffer, get some money, and pay somebody who wants a lot of money to do the job. Because you think if they're demanding more money, they must be more qualified. And I'm saying that's not the case. And if you want to look, go out here and see what the county has done to our town by installing this big chiller here on North Court Street, so that when you walk out the front door and try to talk, you can't even have a conversation, you can't hear yourself think because of the chiller that keeps that county courthouse cool and warm seasonally. That's... What I'm saying is there are non-industrial, pre-industrial solutions to every problem that people bring to you, and I urge you to look for them. You owe it to the town to do some research and find inexpensive, non-industrial, non-motorized, craftsmanshipally, laymanly solutions to problems.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Denise Lamb. Oh, okay, well, thank you very much. Okay. And that concludes public comments for the meeting. Mayor comments. We've got a fairly workable agenda tonight, so I'll try not to ruin that with mayor comments if they go too long. Just a couple of things. There have been just a couple of really great events that have happened in the community over the last few days or week. Of course, this last Friday, we had the final Seed to Feed Dinner of the season at Old Friends, wrapped up a very successful season for Seed to Feed. And Karen, as usual, the decorations were spectacular.
Kevin does a good job.
Watch it, Marvin.
Also, last Saturday night, a number of council members were at the Ed Davis Ball, and glad to support that activity. And then a week ago, of course, we had the harvest celebration at Yucco Inn. So it's good to see those things going on. Also, just for everyone's information, the cable company has changed some of the cable channels. So if you're asked, the council meetings are no longer on Channel 6, they're on Channel 376.
I had two people ask me, and I told them I had no idea.
I've had somebody ask me about it on Facebook, too.
Yeah.
Supposed to do it to our website, right, too?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
376.
376, okay.
So we're still there, but...
Just finding us.
Just finding us is... Who would think to look up in the upper 300s? Also, I wanted you all to know that we had talked about the National Public Lands Day. That was yesterday at Yucco Inn, where we had coordinated with Toyota to make a big impact out there. And this thing was remarkable. There were at least 150 volunteers. Maybe more, Jennifer, I don't know, maybe 200 volunteers. There were a lot of people in red shirts. And where Arlene had worked real hard, along with Robert Bruin and Public Works, and we had pre-staged all the different work they could do. And we were able to offer the group seven or eight different job functions, depending on what they wanted to do. They could rake and haul gravel we had stocked, the pea gravel we had stockpiled to help replenish the trails. Or they could haul and work on mulch. Or they cut back so many of the cattails, Karen, that we rediscovered a lantern. The cattails. We rediscovered a lantern that... We knew it was there, but you can see it again now. Where the Zen Rock Garden was in real disrepair. And for those that hadn't been to Japan, Chuck and Karen, Connie, you've been. Those gardens are real important, and this one was in very much disrepair. And we had a group of 20 or 25 Japanese working on the Zen Rock Garden, and it's completely weeded and back to its original condition, even with the gravel raked and the rite patterns. The gravel's all raked to represent the rocks of the land, and the gravel represents the water. So they did it to that level of detail.
This all manpower, wasn't it?
This was all manpower. We had Public Works employees there helping being team captains. We even had smaller tasks where Dad and his daughters took the stain in the paintbrushes and stained two of the benches that are out in the park. So we kept people busy for... Walk out there in the next day or two, and you'll be really pleasantly surprised with what about 500 or 600 man-hours will do when it's real well-focused. So couldn't be more proud of Public Works and what the Toyota folks accomplished. Also, we need to take action to set trick-or-treat.
Got a question about that.
It's time for us to let everyone know. We traditionally do trick-or-treat on Halloween night, the 31st, from 6 to 8.
Halloween night.
Yes, is that a motion?
It'll be a motion, yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Halloween, or trick-or-treat, excuse me, from 6 to 8 on 10/31. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And also want to let you know that on that same day, the Spooktacular will be downtown for the Downtown Merchants from 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock. It's meant for the preschool kids to be able to do that. Okay. And now we have one very special piece of mayor's comments that I need to do. And will our camera work on automatic pilot? Laurie, could you come in and join us at the council meeting for just a minute, please? She's shaking her head, but I think she is going to...
In that direction?
All right. You go operate the camera. Hi, Laurie. No, you've got to come right up front.
Right up in the front of the pillar.
I gotta go down. Oh, okay, I'll go down.
Really beautiful.
Hey, looks great.
Yeah, that went fair, wasn't it?
Hey, the thing about it is 99% of the people don't know what channel we're on.
Yeah.
We received this letter in black. And what the really fun thing about this is, we happened to receive this here on a day when Laurie was... So she didn't actually know that all this had come in until tonight. But let me read this letter that came to Tracy Hoffman. Dear Tracy Hoffman, Laurie Walters Razor, City of Georgetown, has earned the designation of Master Municipal Clerk, which is awarded by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. IIMC grants the MMC designation only to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government, their community, and state. The International Institute of Municipal Clerks, founded in 1947, has 14,000 members throughout the United States, Canada, and 15 other countries. And the mission of this global nonprofit corporation is to enhance the education opportunities and professional development of its diverse membership. In the light speed and drastic nature of change these days, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary for all in local government to keep pace with the growing demands and changing needs of the citizens we serve. Your city can take immense pride in Laurie's educational accomplishments and achievement of this milestone. On behalf of the ICC and that Board of Directors, I am honored to endorse the conferring of MMC to Laurie Walters Razor, City of Georgetown. We share your pride in this achievement, and we applaud your support of the role Laurie plays in your city.
Congratulations.
Cheeseburger!
Yeah, Tracy.
Absolutely.
This letter is addressed to you, I think, because of the lack of...
20 bucks.
Two Tracy's.
I don't have it on me. I won't give it to you because I won't see it. Private Marvin.
Mine was funnier.
Speech speaks. Now you can go to the podium.
Yeah, thanks for letting me go to all my great...
Good job, congratulations.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Have no disease.
Aw, you're the best.
Oh, that's true. We'll be able to find... City Attorney. Now into the rest of the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Under City Attorney, we have second reading of our amendment to the animal ordinance. Would you like to read the summary, please?
Sure. An ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinance is related to animals. Summary. One, amend Section 3-25 of the Code of Ordinances, which sets forth the requirements for confinement and control of animals. Provides that when outside of the owner or handler's premises, owners shall maintain control of dogs via use of a leash, portable pet carrier, or other humane physical restraint. Provides that dogs running within a public dog park under owner supervision are deemed in compliance with the ordinance. Two, provides for repeal of inconsistent ordinances, severability of provisions, and an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced and publicly read the first time September 24, 2018. Publicly read the second time October 8, 2018.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tingleseims?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. That completes second reading. Under Item 8 on the agenda, we had approved in this year's budget the purchase of a rear loader garbage truck that we will use with the recycling program. Even the single-stream program we have today at the recycling center still has to have the material taken to Lexington. Should we be able, given the recycling market, to implement a wider recycling program? This would be the vehicle we would use for that as well. We can also, we also have an ongoing need for one of the shorter wheelbase rear loader trucks for the business district. So this is a multipurpose vehicle that we budgeted for.
Mel, you want to make it? I'll make it.
I'll make it.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Tom, before we get off, you mentioned recycling. There's a gentleman that used to come in here and talk about recycling. I can't think what his name was. But he said, "We need to look at our bills that we're getting out of Lexington and make certain they're not charging us for any kind of glass distribution." Because, he said, "He guaranteed we're being charged so many, so much each month on each bill for glass."
Because we're in, yeah, he talked to me about that, because we're in a collective pool...
I can't remember his name from...
Hey, Mommy.
There you go.
Because we're in a collective pool, then we get responsible for, even though we're not taking glass over, we get responsible for the pool glass that's in everybody else's, taking it over.
Be glad to check in. Said, "Look and see if we're getting a statement each month that says glass charge, because if it is, we should have been back there."
That's true.
Off for pennies.
Yeah, I agree. It's in kind of, speaks to this market right now. There ain't a lot of choices.
Right.
There ain't a lot of, if somebody doesn't want to do something, you say, "Well, I'll take my business down the street."
There's nobody to take it to.
Where are you going to move to? But we'll absolutely check our bill and see if that's happening.
Might not be, I don't know.
Well, we ought to push back on it, because we don't take glass over there, that's right.
Right.
Okay. Just two things that'll come up right away. Let's see, there, you remember we got rained out of the band after the Chili Cook-off? They were afraid the rain was going to get them. So they rescheduled a concert for Toys for Tots, and it is this weekend, Friday, the 12th. Going to be a concert for calls, and it will be from 7 to 10 in the square. So a make-up event. That event did not go to waste entirely. And then on Saturday, as we've talked about several times, is the big Community Health Fair and Hart Walk at the hospital.
Yes.
Yeah. And then the other thing that I failed to mention at the last meeting is we had one of our very own council members receive an advanced honor from the Kentucky League of Cities at the last Kentucky League of Cities Conference.
And Devin said, you know, "If anybody can't walk on Saturday, if they wanted a five, ten dollar donation or something, that anybody who can't, I'm gonna walk, so I'll be there." So, hope you all come, too.
Devin's kind of our social chairman.
She is the social chair.
Devin is definitely social chairman of City Hall, and she's got us engaged in several such competitions, so that'll be, that'll be a good one.
So the walk starts at the hospital, then?
It's around the hospital property.
There where there's something happens, they got you right there.
Exactly. You never leave the property.
There you go. Animals don't need it.
And you can choose the number of laps you wanna do. So it's, it's, it can be real doable.
Yeah, okay.
Challenge you to keep up with me, David.
Anything else, Millie?
That's all.
Polly?
Nothing.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
No, sir.
Mayor, the city, and whoever was involved did a very good job at the cemetery over off of Hamilton and East Main Street. Was it East Main? Main Avenue, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Tracy, Mrs. Vinegar.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Myself. Public Works. Who am I missing?
Devin was there.
The flowers, it looks, it's beautiful.
Nice improvement.
Yeah.
Second thing I'll mention, not really, it's not a negative by any means, but the gentleman came in, he was kinda concerned with the logo on the water tower, and I, I did happen to see it, and I gotta agree that it just, you know, it just doesn't, you can't read it that well. And then I looked at the one on I-75, and it's very, you know, it's very descriptive. This is Georgetown. I hope we don't, and I guess it's us, I guess it's the water coming, right? That decides on the-
What happened was, we emailed them the file to get that done, and, and the company said, "You're gonna have some issues with the colors washing out. Let's make some changes to it." And we made the changes, and they painted it, and it, that didn't help. And they went back and they painted it again, and that only moderately helped. I'm not sure what it is. I think it's just the-
Where, where this started is with me. I mean, it's so simple to put letters, and, and it can be seen forever, and, and maybe that's what we should've done. I had this brilliant idea, well, what about this new logo we're using?
That sound good.
Wouldn't it be pretty on a water tower? But the application has proved to be difficult. We, we have darkened the gold, and I'm feeling it, too.
I'm just saying, the one by the interstate has the name Georgetown, and I think that's, you know, I don't know if they're planning on changing that one. I guess I hope not.
Well, if, these things are painted on like eight, nine-year cycles. They're, they're pretty long cycles. So it'll probably be there, unless we just get a real bad hankering to change it.
I think that's the situation we're getting in.
Get the harness.
When we're ready to paint the next one, maybe we'll get some more consent.
No problem. That's it, Mayor, everything else is good.
All right, thank you. Karen?
I have had people coming to visit me in the last week and a half, so I have a few things. One is, the Citizens Police Academy asked me about now they have the need for, they've been required to have insurance. That before, they did not have insurance. They didn't have to have separate insurance with Citizens Police Academy. And they were wondering why now, after however many years we've been doing this.
Is this insurance for an event?
It would be an event to cover them. I said, "It's probably just to cover them when they're off of, if they're on city property." City ultimately is responsible anyway, but if they're off city property, that's why they're probably being, so who's, who is asking? Is the police department asking them for it to have it, or is the city asking?
I unfortunately know. It's the first I've heard.
Okay, well, I'll check in a little bit more on that then. Okay.
The first that any of us have heard. Happy to research it for them, but I don't have anything like that.
Okay, it could be one member saying one thing, and one member not saying one thing. Okay, cool. Then the other one is just, and this is to the chief, as well to the mayor, that someone has told me that we have a, a massage center in town, that there's extracurricular activity going on. I said, "I will bring it to the proper authorities." That's all I'm saying. And then on the other one is on paving in town. People are asking the question on why, like Shoshone, the one end of Shoshone was paved, the other wasn't, and I just told them that that section wasn't ready and scheduled for it. So there again, they asked us, "How do we pick what roads?" And I tell them, "Part of it is, you come and tell us, and then we go out and look for it."
Yeah. Well, it, it, for years, we did it purely on, on sight and, and driving. And then Kyle got us onto a program where we've x-rayed all the streets, and we've got that x-ray baseline data. And the idea with, with that data is to do the repairs immediately before a street starts breaking down, and then you're just refinishing, and ultimately, you save money. So we, what we've kind of been doing is a little bit of the x-ray data, and a little bit of just visual, and then asking you all for your input as well on streets that need paving. Now, we did have one really odd situation that happened on, which street was it where they paved? It wasn't some street, we paved down the middle of the street, and we left the sides of the street, and it, it's-
Was it McFarland?
Or in college?
It may have been college. The GIS system had the street width different than what the street actually is, so, so, so people were going by the GIS, and we thought, "Golly gee, why don't you just see what, cover the street that's there?" So we're going back and we're fixing it.
So you put a walking path in the middle of the street, what you've done?
Essentially, we did. But, but it's, but it's all gonna be corrected.
This could've been what they referred to, because they told me there was a street in town that paved the middle of the street.
It's college. That, that is in the process of being corrected.
Okay, that was just a mistake, then.
Yeah. It absolutely was. And, and the other, while we're talking about paving, something that, that I just failed to mention earlier, we just found out that the state is going to do significant resurfacing of, of our main roads next summer, all the way from out by Bat Cat's Pizza, all the way in town, all through Main Street.
That'd be great.
Wow.
All the way out.
Are they gonna mill it?
Will be, we don't know yet. We just know that we are slated for the summer of nineteen for all that refurbishing to happen.
Last time, last time they did that, we got a bike path going on. So I'd say, most of us are not excited about having a bike path that that's involved with it, so.
Yeah, I don't have, I just, I just know there's new, I know there's new blacktop involved.
Okay.
And we, and that gives, there's a lot of time for design. We've also, we're going to bring the paperwork to you all at the next meeting to include, since we're going to make South Water Street one-way and re-stripe it for the new parking spots, we decided it needed to be paved this month before we put on those parking spots and make it one-way. So we're gonna bring you and MAP, a quick MAP hearing to add that to the paving list as well, to really dress it up. That way, if we've done South Water Street, and next summer, they can come in and do West Main, or all the way through Main, we can have a pretty good-looking, pretty good-looking black surface, blacktop surface.
Then one more on, and this is, this is a controversy that we've had forever, is Avalon Path, which is private versus public, that they've not gotten their street paved by the developer, and it should be paved by the developer. It's, it's Avalon Path, it's out there by the Pavilion.
Pavilion Courtyard.
Yep, that's it. That's it.
I was told that HOA was just gonna do Avalon Path, because it is a private road.
That's supposed to be-
The HOA had-
If it's a private road, is this a civil matter?
Yep.
Why do we have, and that was a question, question that I told them I would ask, so to council, why do we have public and private developments like that? I understand why you might have it for a apartment complex, but why do you have that for where it is homes? Why did we ever let that be private in the first place? Because all it's done is created problems, just-
There was a question, there was a question about a year ago.
We've had it for years.
Have we, but, and there's been problems ever since it's been there. Is there, do we have it for the future? Can we still have a private area? Or is that an ordinance we need to change, so it doesn't happen in the future?
I mean, in a lot of communities, it works, and it works well. It really does. I mean, it, it allows for different density, allows for, you don't have to abide by variances. I mean, there's, there are benefits. You can put in private security gates, you can secure the neighborhood. So, I, I mean, there's pros and cons to it, without a doubt, and-
It seems like this particular, maybe it's this particular development, there's been more cons and complaints.
Well, we've had problems with, with non-private developments, too. You know, I mean, we've, we've had developers that have failed, and we've had to go in, and we've had to change the zoning and allow things that weren't originally started there, so.
But see, we've been able to go, we've been able to go in and change those. If it's private, we can't have any say into it.
The question to me isn't whether, whether we can have public or private, or whether we should, but it's if we're going to allow private streets, what assurances are we putting in place that we will be funding for that private street in the future, if it doesn't become a public street by virtue of abandon?
Well, the problem is, on Pavilion Courtyard, it's not a lack of money, it's a lack of not being built out. And when the economy got bad, you have in this certain neighborhood, two-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage. It was meant to be for retirement people and things like that. It wasn't specifically noted like that, but you can't say, you can't have kids, especially if you're rental. So what he, he had like, I wanna say, eight lots left, maybe seven, and he ended up changing some stuff, which aggravated the neighbors as well, to go in there and build bigger homes, but not as much brick. And he did three houses like that, and I think he's got maybe four more lots. The thing was, is they were gonna build it out and then do the road, but that got stopped as well. So I'm not sure if the family's gonna do it or not.
And when we, when we've had these come before the council before, in, in my, my time on the council or court, it's typically at a developer's request to, to control certain cost, or to get more density. And it's a cost-saving thing that at the time is generally described as an ability to hold down cost, and therefore, hold down market price. It, it, that's typically been the trade-off that, that we've talked about, and that was probably the discussion here. We, we face it also, Karen, when we started getting serious about a snow plan for the city, and we started looking at how many streets were dedicated and how many weren't, and we realized how much snow we're pushing on streets that have not been dedicated, but what are we gonna do? Stop? We're not gonna do that.
They pay their taxes.
They pay their taxes, and, and we're, we're, our default has always been to do the right thing. Make it safe and clear the street. But those questions pop up all the time.
And maybe what Andrew, what Andrew started to say about, there needs to be some, something we put in there, that we think it's still a good idea to have some private areas to be built, that maybe we have to put something in there as a safeguard, that whether the economy hits or something happens, that the people still get what they should, what they rightfully deserve to have, and that's a street paved.
And was told.
Well, and that's, that's the developer's responsibility. And the front end is to put the initial application in, and a lot of times, things like that are bonded, at least bonded to a certain degree or to a certain point. But once it gets turned over, like the HOA, then it becomes the HOA's responsibility.
Well, and that, but that's, that's my, that was my point, is, is there an HOA?
Yes.
There is. There is an HOA. I do know that there is an HOA, but did the street get turned over and never got its, what I don't know, did it get turned over and get its pavement on there that it should've had? So, and now the developer is, is shirking his responsibility and throwing it over to the HOA, and so you all take care of it now, I'm not gonna do that final payment, which maybe he should have done.
I don't think that that's the case. I think that the HOA has taken it upon themselves that they're gonna do Avalon and not Echo, because that is where the vacant lots are. And they're trying to keep traffic from being on, if he does build, then you have the concrete trucks and all that coming, so that the, the concern is messing up-
With the road they develop.
The last payment, yeah. So if they just do Avalon Path, people that come in initially can go around Echo to get with the, all the other trucks and not come all the way down, because it uses around. So they could do that. But I'm not saying that, that the developer shouldn't go ahead and do that, and I don't, I don't know where it stands at.
Can you, Andrew, look up with the NC and see if there's anything going on with that development?
Find out if it's got a bond on it.
Uh-huh. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Connie?
Um, no, I just wanna say, congratulations to Polly, that's pretty awesome.
Thanks, Connie.
Right up there with your attorney's degree, right?
That's even better.
Exactly. You got it.
Wall's covered.
And, um, so I just wanna say thank you. And I'm good.
All right. Cute, Chuck.
Well, I wanted to say it was good to see some of the pavement going down, with the rounds I take to work this morning, a fresh, fresh blacktop, and we're milling the road, and I think it's ending up having a better finished product. And I think that's the way we probably should focus on.
Yep.
It looks good.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Mark?
I'm good.
You're good. Anything else to come for the council?
Excuse me, Mayor President?
Yes, sir.
I answered, I responded to your request, big green, I forgot to say something.
Please come on.
I gave each of you, I left each of, for each of you, passion fruit, the green fruit there. And I have a quarter acre of passion fruit. Anybody can have it if you simply plant the seeds and don't mow. That's a non-industrial use.
Here, Steve, you need to take mine, then.
What's that?
I got a mowing business.
Yeah, well, which would you rather have, a mowed lawn that looks like a golf course, or fresh fruit? You can have fresh fruit if you want. That's why I left you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, Steve.
Meeting is adjourned.